Good evening, everybody. At this time, I'd like to call the Crystal City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons is absent. Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh. It's empty. It's empty.
Okay, I'm not the only one. All right, we have the agenda before us. Looking for a motion. Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Nancy?
I'll second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. So we have a proclamation for tonight. This is actually our first meeting of the month, so it feels late, but it's not. We're here. This is for Black History Month, proclamation for February 2022, whereas the city of Crystal is committed to recognizing and honoring all members of our community. And one of the city's councils' priorities is that Crystal be a city in which all feel welcome. And whereas across the United States, this February, millions of Americans are joining together to celebrate the accomplishments and lasting impacts of our country's black leaders, citizens, and people. And whereas in this month-long national celebration, we applaud the contributions of black communities, of the black community, and to build lasting change for the generation to come. And whereas in 2022, the theme of Black History Month centers on black health and wellness, considering activities, rituals, initiatives that black communities have done to be well. And whereas the Crystal of City, the City of Crystal Council invites all members of the community to commit and understand justice, freedom, and equality for all. Therefore, now I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month in the city of Crystal. So it takes some executive privilege here. I'm going to read a quick excerpt out of a book. I'm picking this one because it's short and I don't want to take up too much time. It's not my favorite Black History story, but it's one that I think is a little fun, so bear with me. This one is about Harry Hoosier. Harry Hoosier from 1750 to 1806 is another famous black American minister who was born into slavery in North Carolina. He was sold north to Maryland when he eventually gained his freedom and became a Christian. He traveled with a noted minister, Francis Osberry. And although Francis Osberry drew massive crowds, Harry drew even larger ones. Signer of the Declaration, Benjamin Rush, said, "Considering Hoosier had no formal education, he was the best orator Rush had ever heard." Hoosier was particularly effective in helping reach the average laborers, who were the backbone of America, had little formal education. Those converted under Harry, Harry's ministry became known as Hoosiers. Anybody guess what's coming next? And gradually moved into the West in Indiana. This is most likely how Indiana got the nickname as the Hoosier State. So that's something that I've been able to meet some people from Indiana, and they have no idea. So that's kind of cool.
I have no idea.
So, well, I won't get into my most favorite, maybe a different day, because that one is so much longer, but it relates to the same time period. Next, we want to move on to some of our guests. We have a lot of people here today. We're going to be fairly busy in the beginning. It is our Robbinsdale Area Schools Superintendent David Engstrom. And welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and giving me some time tonight.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers and city staff and community. I am David Engstrom. I'm the, I was going to say new superintendent of the Robbinsdale Area Schools, but I think I can only say that for the first six months that I'm on my fifth month right now. So I am the superintendent of the Robbinsdale Area Schools. And I wanted to be able to come tonight. While I've had a chance to meet some of you, I wanted to introduce myself to you and just give you a quick update about the school district. Some of you may have heard that I'm from Colorado. And while that is true, I've lived in Colorado for the last 20 years. I've always considered myself a misplaced Minnesotan who lives in Colorado because I grew up in this state and was raised in the state of Minnesota in a small town in the southwestern part of the state called Mountain Lake, Minnesota, farming community of 2,000. And so I'm really pleased to return back to Minnesota, and I'm really honored to be the superintendent of the Robbinsdale Area Schools. I'd hoped that this return and me being superintendent, that I was going to be the superintendent that would lead us in the recovery stages of the pandemic, and yet it still kind of feels like we're still in this pandemic, especially from everything that we experienced through the month of January. So because it still feels like we're in a pandemic, I feel that my honeymoon period was really short in being the superintendent. And then couple that with my Minnesota Vikings didn't even make the playoffs this year. It kind of felt like a double whammy of coming back. But again, I'm really honored to be the superintendent here of the schools. This COVID impact has been really, has been very real in Robbinsdale Area Schools. And we are hoping that that was the peak and the last of what we've experienced back in January. And we've been taking all of the mitigation strategies of masking and requiring a vaccination for our staff, if not testing, and also of the cleanliness factors that we've had in place, and then also providing of convenient testing locations for our staff and for our students. But last month was really a whammy that hit us. At one point, we had a staff absent rate of over 20% in the district, and that coupled with that we have 115 open positions. You know, we employ 1,800 in this school district, and to have 115 unfilled positions is like 7% of our staffing. What you, if you have children at our schools, and I hope you do, where you have probably seen it the most is the fact of our lack of substitutes. In a normal year, when a teacher puts in for a sub, over nine times out of 10, they will get a substitute. And this year, we have rarely ever gotten over 40%, which means four times out of 10, the teacher is getting a substitute. In January, we were down near 20%, only two times out of 10. And that's why we had to make that very difficult decision of going to remote learning from the 18th through the 28th. And yet, we know that all of this has had a huge impact on student learning. We know there has been a huge impact on our student and staff's social, emotional well-being, and that we are doubling down on creating a welcoming and safe and healthy learning environment while we're addressing the learning loss that has happened over the course of these last two years. And then the other thing is that I chose the Robbinsdale Area Schools because its mission and vision, when I applied, aligned to who I am personally. And the way that the district has always explained that is called a unified district vision. And yet, having been here now for eight months, I know that this pandemic has changed us so much that I've got the support of the Board of Education, is that we're going to undergo a new strategic plan process, that while we are committed to key components of that unified district vision, we're going to embrace the best of who we are. But this pandemic has changed us and our learning and what we have learned from it so much that we need to address that in a new strategic plan as we envision the future for what we want our students and for our communities to become from our school system. And so I know what community is like, having grown up in a small town of 2,000 people. And so to develop a strategic plan, it is going to be with a lot of community input. So stay tuned, and you're going to start seeing opportunities for surveys and focus groups and key people serving on key teams as we will be developing that new strategic plan for the district. So you've heard me talk about Mountain Lake more than once. I'm really proud to be back in Minnesota, and I'm proud to be from Mountain Lake. But I was a bit skeptical when I took this position and I heard that we feel like a community, even though we're made up of seven cities. And yet, the more time that I spend here and the more that I get to meet people, I hear of people who attended our schools and live in the area, have children that have attended our schools and still live in the area, and have grandchildren who attend their schools and live in our area, and that this truly is one big community made up of seven different cities. And so I'm really appreciative of the way we all work together to support each other, and I'm appreciative of what we have, of our 281 partnership. And Mayor Adams, you were part of the meeting that we had this morning, and City Manager Norris, where you attend that meeting every once a month, where we align our efforts between all of the cities and the school district. And I'm really pleased of the shared spaces that we have and of our schools that are located right here in Crystal, Forest Elementary and Neal Elementary, I have to look at my notes to make sure I get them right, and Fair School, Crystal, all located right in here. And so we know that we have work to do, and that's why we're going to undertake a new strategic plan so we have the highest leverage points that we can be pulling in order to impact student achievement and student social, emotional, learning, and well-being. And so I look forward to working with the communities. I look forward to continuing working with Crystal. And I really appreciate the time to be able to come tonight and be able to give you, show me who you, or to show you who I am, and that I look forward to our relationship as we work together for the best interest of the students here in these cities, but especially in Crystal. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Would you be willing to take a question?
Absolutely.
In relationship to the meeting this morning, you had some data that was in reference to some better news, I guess, in the virus and the attendance of the staff. Could you share some of those positive things, hopeful things with us or with the council?
While when we were hearing of Omicron coming, and we knew it was going to come hard, and that our hope was that it was going to burn very fast, that was predictable, and that's what happened. As quickly as our absentee rate went up to 20% and as quickly as our staff and student positivity and symptoms rate, positivity and symptoms rate went up to 10% in the district, it is now, what, three weeks later, four weeks later, that we are down now to less than 1% in each of those positivity and symptom rates of our staff and of our students. So that's very promising, and that we're going to be looking at all of that data. We're going to be looking at the guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health, and then also what our community data is as we look at our mitigation strategies and what we're currently doing. The troubling, the still troubling data is that we're only at a 45% fill rate for our substitutes, and we still have just mass vacancies for positions that we just haven't been able to fill yet. So we're still working on those.
Transportation is another big one. That's a challenge.
Yes.
Spoke of that this morning, yeah.
Yes.
Are you aware of that?
No. Yeah.
I was kind of hoping to make it through a meeting without talking about transportation, but.
Did you have a comment?
Yes. I'm fortunate, I have five kids in the school district, three at Forest, one at Fair, and one at Robbinsdale Middle.
Thank you.
And, you know, I want to say, one, first of all, thank you, as, you know, having five kids. I've been able to kind of see all the different sides of it, you know? And we have great staff, you know? Principal Jackson and Principal Ross are very, very good, and we've had some very good partnerships with them. And even, I just want to commend how things kind of, you know, it was rough, and everybody's kind of working through it, but even in the transportation situation, right, it's doing the best you can with what you got. And so I don't, I know you probably get a lot of parents that are frustrated and that are, you know, that are upset and throwing rocks, but I want to commend you and your staff and that is, we're working with a tough situation, but it does feel good to see the communication efforts and things that you're doing to us parents, right? You know, so even sometimes when it's last minute, but, you know, we're all in this together. So from, I just wanted to share that.
I really appreciate it, and thank you for working with us. Yeah, there were lots of bumps. And if you would have told me two years ago when we entered into this pandemic, you will be dealing with transportation issues because of the pandemic, I would have said, you're crazy, you know? But the way that it has played out, and right now, we are fully staffed with drivers, with our contracted transportation, and yet now we are still dealing with an absentee rate of our drivers for the various reasons that they would be absent. So we're continuously making progress from over the beginning of the year. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for sending five kids to the Robbinsdale Area Schools.
Any other questions for David?
I'll go.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm a special education teacher in Osseo Area Schools, so I'm kind of on the other side of that, and just wanted to thank you for all the work you've done this year, and just kind of share my thanks to all the teachers and staff, because it's year two of kind of a crazy couple of years, and teachers have had to adjust on the fly many, many different times. So it's been a tough couple of years. So thanks for all that you do, and just kind of share that appreciation with staff and students. So thanks.
Thank you. We have a remarkable staff here in the Robbinsdale Area Schools, and you have a good superintendent up there in Osseo also. Corey and I are communicating all the time as we try to make sure that we're on the same page.
All right. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everyone.
Pleasure having you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. We have our Police Chief Reverend here to do an introduction. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, members of the council. I'm just wondering, since Superintendent Engstrom said that after eight months, he can't say that he's new, how about after the 10th year as chief, you just say that I'm still new? Kick me out the door when you're sick of me. We'll just, no?
No.
Well, you don't have to answer.
Afraid not.
Officer Anthony, if you could step up, that'd be great. So as you know, the mayor has the privilege of swearing in our new officers on day one, basically, of their first day here, and then we bring the officers here to meet you when they are off probation. So this is Officer Tyler Anthony. Candidates who are hired as Crystal Police Officers endure rigorous process prior to being hired, and they get the opportunity to wear a uniform. Candidates complete an application, go through two interview panels, participate in an interview with myself, the deputy chief, the assistant city manager, conduct an extensive background investigation, a full psychological screening, a physical screening, and physical agility test before being offered a position. After they are hired, they complete two weeks of administrative and initial training, are given the oath of office by the mayor, and complete three months of individualized field training with an experienced officer. After successfully completing field training, they are approved for solo patrol and are assigned a shift for the remainder of their first year. Once they've successfully completed their probationary year, I approve them for permanent status, which is the benchmark we celebrate with Officer Anthony tonight. Tyler grew up in Stillwater, Minnesota, and graduated from Stillwater Area High School in 2007. Through high school, he was heavily involved with sports and was very involved with music. Tyler honorably served for over 10 years in the United States Marine Corps, retiring as a sergeant with the very prestigious United States Marine Drum and Bugle Corps. Among many other things in this role, he was involved in playing bugle for many funerals at Arlington National Cemetery. During his active military service, Tyler received seven awards and had opportunities to travel all over the world. After retiring from active duty in 2016, he joined the Army National Guard as a military police officer and continues to serve in that capacity until today. This service included a one-year deployment shortly after he started as an officer here in Crystal. Thank you for your past and current dedicated and decorated service to our country. From a very early age, Tyler says he knew he wanted to do two things in life, be a Marine and be a law enforcement officer. Having completed his first goal, he's moved on to the second, which brings us here today. Tyler completed his law enforcement skills training at Hennepin Technical College and graduated from Century Community College with an associate's degree in law enforcement in May 2019. After leaving his full-time service with the Marines, Tyler worked in construction and security for a while. While going back to school, he spent some time as both a reserve officer and a community service officer with the Stillwater Police Department, and served in that capacity until being hired by Crystal PD. Tyler applied for a position with Crystal PD in June 2020 and said in his application, "I would like to work with a department that has great relationship with the citizens of the community, just like Crystal." All of Tyler's references highly recommended him and described him as respectful, self-motivated, a good communicator, mature, professional, consistent, detail-oriented, eager to learn, willing to help out, dedicated, easy to talk to, loyal, and considerate. One reference described him as a gentle giant. These are all qualities we look for in officers that are going to join the Crystal team. Tyler lives in the Northwest Metro, and in his free time enjoys bodybuilding, reading, video games, riding his bike, and anything World War II. Please join us in officially welcoming Officer Tyler Anthony in his promotion to permanent police officer with the Crystal Police Department.
Congratulations. Welcome.
That's why you don't say formal. Once a Marine, always a Marine.
Thanks, Tyler. Absolutely. Thank you.
You may continue.
Thank you. I won't take too much of your time, but Brooke Raker, if you could step up. So as you are all aware, Crystal Police Department has a lovely, Crystal Crime, I should say, the city of Crystal has a lovely crime prevention board that has been here since 2008. And Brooke is our only, since 2008, we've had Pat Fidel as our first president, Brooke as our second president, and she's been serving in this role since 2007. And unfortunately, Brooke moved out of our city, and so she has, obviously, has to give up her reign as our president and part of our crime prevention board. But she is here so that I could introduce you to her, but also recognize her for her many, many years of volunteer service with our crime prevention board, and I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done, not just for our community, but for our police department, and her and I have become fast friends. So I know that we are going to still be in contact with one another, still do lunch. So we're going to be doing that. So on behalf of the Crystal Police Department, thank you for your volunteer services in your role as president of the Crystal Crime Prevention Board, yours 2017, I said seven, should I say seven? 2017 to 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Assistant Chief. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to be on the board for nearly five years and president for four. And we didn't move too far. We moved to Badness Heights, and I hope I can get involved there, too, but I miss you all, and I'm still here. I am still going to have lunch with you. Don't worry. And I also wanted to introduce Tracy Kamish, who's our new president, and I'm thankful to have her stepping up, and I'm thankful to have Steph, and then Pat as well, who's still treasurer, and Leanne, who hopefully can meet at some point, who will be our vice president. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Brooke. I am done now, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you for, thank you for all, man.
That was our new chief, Steffi Reverend.
That was awesome.
All right, we have a consent agenda before us. I'll read that into the record at this point. Approval of the minutes for the following meetings. First one is the city council work session for January 13th, 2022, work session from January 18th, 2022, council meeting from that same date, and then work session from January 19th, '22. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in the office of the city clerk. Approval of a resolution accepting donations. Approval of the appointment of Nathan Carrollson to the Environmental Quality Commission to a term expiring December 31st, 2024. Approval of a resolution adopting the 2022 city council rules, which was continued from January 18th. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that? Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Looking for a second? Brendan?
I'll second the motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Gee, do we have anybody here for open forum? Nobody here? Anybody here wishing to speak during open forum? All right. Seeing heads go this way and nobody approaching, we will skip by open forum and move on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is the disbursements of $25,000 or greater. I read those into the record every time. We have quite a list today. Lot of things with the police station. So Health Partners, Inc., February health insurance premiums for $117,233. Men Para for the employee and city required contributions for pay date 1/22/2022. $64,160. SEH for 2021 and 2022 utility reconstruction project costs, $43,761. Cross for the police station management, $70,714. Laketown Electric for the police station, $219,212. McDowell Company for the police station, $97,237. Multiple Concepts Interiors Police Station, $81,170. Northland Concrete and Mason for police station, $271,895. River City for the police station, $56,000, excuse me, $58,890. JUFH Enterprises LLC for the refunded escrow funds of $46,000 even. Construction Systems for the new police station, $217,564. Lakeland Electric Corporation for the new police station, $47,072. Logis for the monthly expenses for applications and support for $73,918. McDowell Company for the police station, $114,859. Mollin Concrete for the police station, $260,083. Northland Concrete and Mason for the police station, $227,766. Men Para for the employee, city, employee and city required contributions for pay date 2/4/22 for $68,304. Met Council for wastewater services for the month of February, $142,050. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $2,221,897.64. Council, questions on any of these items? Yeah, go ahead, Brendan.
I got my answer, but I was still asking you.
Yeah. Please, I hoped you would.
The JUFH Enterprises LLC refund of escrow funds? I kind of partly got my answer, but what's, which EDA lot? What was that one?
Councilmember, that is not actually an EDA lot. That's the lot split on 36th Avenue, where two lots were created.
Got it.
And that is a partial refund of escrow for public infrastructure they had to build, specifically the water main. And then the remaining infrastructure, they will be doing, they're doing right now, or they'll be doing later this spring, and so they'll get the rest of their escrow back when it's all complete.
Can I ask a pointed question on that one? Do you know, Water Main's done? Was it done for two? Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right, next, we will have Chi Yang address the council in relationship to multiple animal licenses. Chi, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. Jessica Barnhart has applied for a non-commercial multiple animal license. The applicant currently has four dogs. The animal control officer has inspected the property, and his report was included in your packet. Notice of the proposed license and tonight's meeting was mailed to neighboring properties. Staff is recommending approval of the license. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions. I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, for any comments from neighbors that may be in attendance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chi. All right, any questions for Chi from the council? Seeing none. Jessica? All right. Don't be nervous, we're not going to interrogate you. It's not an interview.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, everyone, and thank you for considering my application. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Then we'll find out.
Well, I was just curious, you know, when I saw four dogs, because we have one who's, you know, 40 pounds, but, you know, lots of space. And then I turned the page over and saw, oh, four Chihuahua breeds. And so, yeah, and it sounds like no issues or anything. This is just one of our prerequisites. If you have more than three, you have to apply for that. So, could I just ask, how did the process go for you?
It was actually pretty smooth. It was just a matter of coordinating with the animal control officer to be able to have the inspection done and everything.
Cool.
It was kind of rough with how my schedule is and how his schedule is, because he works, you know, like 8:00 to 4:30.
Daytime hours, yeah.
My hours are 7:30 to 5:00 at work, so.
Oh, yeah, ouch.
So, I worked with my boss at work, and we were able to get something in right away at 8:00 in the morning, and I just showed up late.
Okay.
And they were fine with it.
Oh, good. It's always nice to hear how things go for, you know, anyone coming in for a license or change, so thank you.
All right. Thank you for stepping forward. I'm going to check and see if there's any... Oh, I'm sorry.
I just comment, I love the fact that the dogs have their own designated bedroom in your house.
I mean, it's my bedroom, but we're all together.
Share space, yeah.
But the report says a bedroom designated for them, so anyway.
Communal living. There it is.
I stay warm when it's cold out.
That's right.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to see if there are any neighbors here wishing to comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any neighbors here? All right, you got off easy. There you go.
Honestly, they didn't know I had them.
That's even better.
That's even better. That's awesome. All right. Council members, have a motion? Go ahead, Nancy.
I'll make a motion to... I just want to make sure I read this right. There it is. For the non-commercial multiple license for Jessica Barnhart at 4848 Florida Avenue North.
All right, looking for a second? Go ahead.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Therese. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. And you don't have to stay here for the rest of the meeting. All right, item three, we have our recreational director here, John Elholm, so he's going to talk a little bit about some air conditioning. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight to talk about air conditioning at the Crystal Community Center. Oh.
Oh. There it is.
There it is. I had to include a picture, even though the picture isn't all that glamorous. But basically, the community center building has three air conditioning systems, and condensing units have been replaced for two of the systems. So, what the request is this evening is to replace that third condensing unit. It's over 30 years old and had a few issues last summer, so we're looking forward to getting that replaced in time for this summer. We did receive three quotes. UHL was the lowest quote, and the budget for the project was $45,000. So, our recommendation is to approve the resolution entering into an agreement with UHL to furnish and install a 30-ton condensing unit at the Crystal Community Center in the amount of $39,750. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I'm amazed 30 years for a condensing unit. That's amazing.
Yeah, it's been tweaked here and there, but...
You helped it limp along.
Yeah, it's time, though.
It is time.
Any other questions for John? Other questions, John? All right, looking for a motion? John, go ahead.
Can you make a motion approving the resolution to replace the air conditioning condensing unit at the Crystal Community Center?
All right, thank you. Nancy?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would think the park board is on would jump on that one. Mayor.
There it is. All right. Oh, Mark is here tonight. That's awesome.
I'm not the new employee in the room.
Okay, well, welcome. This is our Public Works Director, and he's going to talk about sanitary sewer.
We're going to talk about a lot of fun stuff tonight. All right, good evening, Mayor, council. 2022 long trip plan, allocated $350,000 for a variety of work at the South Lift Station, one of them being the generator moving from inside the building to the south side of the building. It will have sound attenuation, so it's not going to wake up the neighbors as much, and the building will be kind of shielding it from the homes as well, but that's to make room for a new public bathroom that'll go in the space, since it's right along the trail there, the regional trail, as well as the ball fields there. Provides more year-round facilities, literally. The existing generator will be traded in as part of the arrangement. Cost is $83,315 from Ziegler. This came from one of the joint purchasing agreements that we're a part of. So, the motion before you. Here we go. Is authorize the replacement of the South Lift Generator. Are there any questions?
All right, go ahead, Brendan.
In, I guess, kind of line with probably my questions for you always. With the whole project scope, right? This isn't just one item. So, how, you know, kind of, where does this fall in the whole scope of, you know, the project?
In terms of, like, sequencing, or we talk about the whole big picture?
The whole big picture, dollar amount, right? Because, you know, we're, you know, the whole thing, we're $350,000.
Yep, so...
This is not... It's still a pretty significant portion of it, right?
Yep, so, okay, so we're moving and relocating the generator from inside to outside. That's the, we'll say, $85,000 right now. Replacement of the number-two pump, I believe, is going to be actually in this same ballpark of $80,000. The new bathroom, well, so we're going to do the bathroom, the replacement of existing building stores, windows, and we're looking at the roof. So, that actually might be on the order, probably, I think that one was going to be probably closer to $100,000, because we're looking at replacing... Right now, it kind of looks like a bunker, if you look at the building. We're trying to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing for the homeowners across the street, so we're looking at options for replacing windows that are still secure, so you can't break in, but it doesn't look like a bunker. So, right now, we're feeling good that we'll be on track for the $350,000 overall. We're still trying to price things together. And then the security improvements also include basically a remote access for the door, so it can be on a timer. Basically, it'll look like the Becker Park bathroom, where it'll be on a timer, you know, whatever the hour is, it'll shut down and lock. That's kind of the big picture, so, yeah. We're feeling good we're going to be on budget for this one, based on what we've seen so far.
All right, that's...
Nancy?
Yeah, a couple of things. Is this that little brick building?
Yes.
On the trail? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It smells periodically.
But that is... I just wanted to say, that's a great location for a restroom.
Oh, yeah.
That's fantastic. And then, do you have a timeline on this, once things come through?
So, this one, we're hoping to order it now and get it in June or July, I believe, is the timeline. That's why this is the... This one and the pump are the biggest, like, widgets that depend on supply chains and stuff. Everything else is more dependent on labor, so... The goal is, yeah, by the end of the summer, it should be operational. There's also some staging stuff, so we can't do the bathroom until the generator's moved. We can't do the doors until the bathroom's done, you know, so you've got to kind of work that part of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, John?
First of all, how many years did we get out of the first generator? And then, secondly, how often does this generator run? Yes, you know?
So, this is the original generator, I believe. So, it's been... It was built, literally built into the building. So, when it turns on, and you have hearing protection, it's still really loud in there.
So, you're saying 60 years?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I would easily say 60 years. As far as often as it runs, well, it runs... Tuesday is test day, so it runs every Tuesday at 8:00 AM. Otherwise, it's when the power goes out.
Yep.
So, hopefully not that often.
So, how many hours roughly does this existing generator?
That is a great question. I'm not sure many hours around the current one.
All right.
But I will find out, because I'm a curiosity.
I mean, it's interesting to know.
Yeah.
If it lasted 50 years, I mean, how many, how often it was running.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on this one? All right, looking for a motion? Go ahead, Brendan.
I make a motion. I'm not sure I said it right. Make a motion approving the replacement of the sanitary sewer lift station generator.
All right, Nancy?
I will second.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right, two pumps.
All right, so for this one, we're replacing the two pumps at the West Lift Station, which is just actually down the road here on 41st. Couple of years ago, we changed it, so there's actually money in the operating fund for pump replacement, because it is just part of doing business. In looking at, we for sure need to do one pump. However, due to the way they're mounted, you have to take off the manifold and everything at the same time. So, basically, the other pump is ready to be switched out. And so, because that pump is within the next few years of the new replacement, we decided to get a cost to do both. As you can see, it's actually pretty much in line with our budget. So, the plan is to do both, and then we can be done, which means we're going to save more than the $1,500. Even though we're over budget, we can pick that up in other line items from the operating fund, but then we don't have to come back and have all the labor to take apart the whole thing to do the other pump in two years.
Very good. Questions on this one?
I answered it.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
I'll make it.
Go ahead, Therese.
Bring a motion approving the replacement of the sanitary sewer lift station pumps.
Nancy, you want a second?
I will second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries.
All right, this last one, now we're rounding out the utility funds here, stormwater. As part of the preparation for the 22-millon overlay, we do an assessment of all the infrastructure, primarily looking at, like, water valves, as well as the stormwater system. We don't want to fix the pavement if we know there's known issues below that could cause us to go back and fix it in the near future. We identified some significant stormwater repairs needed. The stormwater long-term plan has $75,000 for repairs this year. We got two quotes. Valley Rich was the lowest at $59,950. This is literally how our long-term plan is structured, where we have scheduled mill and overlay, and we have money in the stormwater fund to address issues that come up. So, I think, to me, this is kind of the great, the case study of, this is what happens to have a long-term plan and a systematic way of working through things, where we go in, we assess the stuff, we fix what we have to, and so we get in, get out, and move on. So, with that, the motion before you is to approve the contract with Valley Rich for the storm sewer repairs.
All right. Questions? Brendan?
We called it, it's all good.
Do I even need to ask the question?
The bid?
I saw the hand creep.
Bid competition.
Yeah, I guess that always baffles me. That's such a... I think that's such a large difference, right? You know, I mean...
Yeah, I mean...
A $15,000 difference?
Yeah, I would suspect it was probably more labor-related there. I mean, I don't think the suppliers are different, because it's basically some catch basins are the bulk of where the work is. Interesting times out there.
Yeah. I just, I feel like we've... You've presented, especially over the last year and a half, some... I'm like, that's a very large differences in these bids. Like, the low bid is like, and the next one up is, you know, so I just always inquire, so...
So, we have a long history working with these contractors, so I mean, I don't say they're interchangeable, but, I mean, it could have easily gone the other way, too. So, yeah, it's very interesting how the numbers shake out here. What's going to be really telling is when we open bids for the mill and overlay and the recon, and the spread that we see there is going to be, hopefully, not a big deal, but I'm anticipating it's going to be an interesting experience.
All right, Nancy?
Yeah, a couple of things, just to comment.